Colleagues, it's 3:00 PM. We're going to convene. Our chair inquired if I could preside over the meeting in her absence. Both our chair and our vice chair unable to be here. In a moment, I will inquire of a colleague if they're prepared to make a motion to allow said colleagues to participate remotely. But in the interest of expediency, because it's Sunday afternoon, let's begin. Madam Clerk, with a roll call, please.
Ms. Dorr.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here.
Ms. Gibson. Mr. Young.
Present.
Ms. Rizzi.
Here.
Dr. Harris Mohammed. Ms. Burke.
Here.
Ms. Page.
Present.
Ms. Jones.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And is there a colleague of mine prepared to make a motion relevant to -- Ms. Jones? Ms. Dorr.
I move to allow Dr. Shonda Harris Mohammed and Ms. Kenya Gibson to participate in the special emergency meeting of the School Board of the City of Richmond electronically via telephone.
Thank you, Ms. Dorr. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Dorr.
Yes.
Ms. White.
Yes.
Ms. Gibson. Mr. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi.
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed. Ms. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Page.
Yes.
Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. We will provide just a moment for the clerk to dial in our colleagues. Ms. Richardson, if you'd just tell us when you're ready. You're ready?
Ms. Gibson, are you able to hear us?
Not well.
Dr. Harris Mohammed, are you able to hear us? Yes, ma'am. We still have you on the open. Is that audio any better?
I don't know. I don't hear anybody talking. If anyone asks.
It's just me.
Okay.
Right now, we're just waiting for Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. You're noted. We can hear you now, and we're about to the next agenda item.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Attorney. Colleagues, we are going to read into closed -- if it's the -- Madam Clerk? I'm sorry. Thank you, Madam Clerk. First, it's requisite that we adopt the agenda. But to finish the thought, we'll read into closed, if it's the will of the board, in a moment, and then subsequent, our tenure enclosed across the hall. We're going to go across the hall and then reconvene back in this room. But first, Madam Clerk, the agenda.
May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Any one of us?
Nobody.
Okay. I move that we accept the agenda as is.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. And Ms. Page, if I heard correctly, there's motion properly on the floor. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Dorr.
Yes.
Ms. White.
Yes.
Ms. Gibson.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
No.
Ms. Rizzi.
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Page.
Yes.
Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, colleagues. The motion passes. Pursuant to -- Madam Clerk, pursuant to Sections 2.2-3711, Subsection A, Subsection 7, and Subsection 8 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended, I move that the School Board of the City of Richmond convene a closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel pertaining to specific time-sensitive matters related to legal matter number 22 -- excuse me, 2022-01, executive orders and/or pertaining to actual or probable litigation regarding same where such consultation or briefing and open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the school board.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, I think I heard. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Dorr.
I'm sorry. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Ms. Dorr.
Yes.
Ms. White.
Yes.
Ms. Gibson.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi.
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Page.
Yes.
Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, colleagues. We're now enclosed. Again, we're going to proceed across the hall, and then we will reconvene perfectly in a few minutes back in this room. Thank you.
That everybody has seated?
Oh, yes, and standing at the table.
Okay, thank you. All right, who can read us back into open this door?
Ms. Jones has the motion.
Okay, Ms. Jones, can you read us back into motion, please?
Okay, I moved that the Richmond School Board Directors clerk to call for roll call vote of the board members that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Richmond School Board.
Thank you.
Second.
Ms. Jones made the motion and you seconded it?
Ms. Burke.
Ms. Burke made the second, thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Ms. Dorr.
Yes.
Ms. White.
President.
This is the certification for the closed session, Ms. White.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Gibson?
No.
Mr. Young?
Hi.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Next item on. Madam Attorney, does someone have a motion?
Ms. Dorr.
Ms. Dorr, you have a motion that you want to present to the board?
Yes, I move that the school board authorize the filing and/or joining legal action to, one, preserve the school board's authority under Article 8, Section 7 of the Virginia Constitution to supervise the schools in the City of Richmond Public Schools Division, and, two, ensure the provision of in-person instruction during the COVID pandemic in compliance with Virginia law, including but not limited to employee mitigation measures as provided by School Board 1303, 2021.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Dorr, and seconded, I believe, by Ms. Burke, am I correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
We need discussion.
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, before roll call, discussion.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir, go right ahead, Mr. Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am most disappointed that this body has elected to adopt, what I'm going to characterize as a gag order, and preclude members of this body from speaking to most consequential decision. I think it's most undemocratic and truly unfortunate. I protest in the highest regard as it relates to precluding persons around this table from speaking to whether we are in favor or in opposition in our rationale there too, but to instead limit this discussion to an aye or a nay, I think that is most unfortunate. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Any other board member for discussion? Madam Attorney, do we have any other board members?
Ms. Gibson wants to make another motion.
We have to clear, we have to take care of the motion that we have on the table first.
Understood.
Madam Attorney?
Yes, she said understood.
Okay. Any other discussion from board members on this motion made by Ms. Dorr and seconded by Ms. Burke? Seeing a hearing that, well, not seeing, but hearing that there is no other discussion? I'm sorry?
There's nothing.
Okay, thank you. Before we vote on this, I do want to also say that I appreciate the superintendent sharing with us what other divisions are doing. I am concerned I'm not clear. It is just not fitting with me well right now on the ration. I understand the why, but I'm not appreciative of the how. And I'm very concerned. I think our mass resolution, as strong as it is, supports the school division statements on the mask mandate that we have locally. I am also concerned.
Dr. Harris, a moment.
Yes? Yes?
Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're ready for vote. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Ms. Dorr.
I didn't hear what Dr. Shonda Harris, I didn't understand what she said.
Madam Madam Chair, I would welcome.
I can't, I can't hear.
Madam Chair, I would welcome the continuation of your conversation, too.
Dr. Harris Mohammed, do you want to move forward with the vote?
Yes, I just asked that Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Thank you.
Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Ms. White?
No.
Ms. Gibson?
No.
Mr. Young?
No.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Come back to me last, please.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
I think I am going to abstain.
Okay. We have a one... five to three motion passes?
Should be, yes.
I would like to make a motion.
You're... Is the, may I speak, Dr. Harris Mohammed? Ms. Gibson said that she would like to make a motion.
Yeah, she's allowed to make a motion.
May I speak before she makes that motion, please?
Yes.
I just want to remind board members of the call of this particular meeting and that any other items that are, that may extend beyond the call of this particular meeting should, cannot be addressed.
Thank you, because of, and I stated that to you board colleagues that this special urgent meeting was pertaining to legal matters only. Ms. Gibson, Madam Vice Chair, does your motion align with the call for this meeting?
Yes.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that all contact with the media or public facing comments that the board will review all press statements and media advisories in advance, that the superintendent will only appear in the media when he can be joined by Board Chair Dr. Shonda Harris Mohammed, who has been elected to speak on behalf of the governing body for Richmond Public Schools.
Do you want me to read this again? Repeat the motion.
She said, please repeat the motion. Can you hear her, Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Ms. Lilly asked that, can you repeat the motion?
Oh, I cannot, because I have the intent of it, but I do not have all of it written down, I'm sorry.
Okay, Ms. Gibson, can you repeat the motion slowly for the clerk and the attorney?
That I move that all contact with the media or public facing comments regarding the action, you know, the legal action adopted this evening, that the board will review all press statements and media advisories in advance. The superintendent will only appear in the media when he can be joined by Board Chair Dr. Shonda Harris Mohammed, who has been elected to speak on behalf of the governing body of Richmond Public Schools.
Board colleagues, you've heard the motion, is there a second?
Second.
It was seconded, I believe, by Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. It was moved by Ms. Gibson that, and I, paraphrasing, that pretty much the superintendent, when discussing this matter with the media, is in the presence of the board chair. Is that some of the synopsis of the motion?
And that all board, I think there was also a part that the board will review all of the statements.
That the school board will review all the statements, is that the school board or the chair will review the statements?
I got down the board.
Okay. All right, any discussion, board? First of all, Ms. Lilly, is this motion in line with the legal matter we just discussed and closed today?
I think it's a fair motion for the discussion today.
Okay, thank you, Madam Attorney, thank you, Madam Vice Chair, for your motion. Any discussion from board members?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Young, proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Clarifying question for the patron, does this also, I'm sorry, does it also include board members, or is it limited to the superintendent? I.e., are board members also precluded from speaking to what we're, what a majority of this board approved to?
I think this includes, I think this motion includes if this, when the superintendent is approached by the media or discusses this legal matter with the media, the motion is that he does so with the board chair. That, I don't think I heard all board members.
I can revise my motion for clarity to note that this does not preclude individual board members the right, the right to provide clarity on individual votes this evening.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Young, is that sufficient for you?
That the, I motion that all contact with the media or public facing comments related to the legal action voted on this evening, the board will review all press statements and media advisories in advance. The superintendent will only appear in the media when he can be joined by Board Chair Dr. Shonda Harris Mohammed, who has been elected to speak on behalf of the governing body of Richmond Public Schools. This motion does not preclude individual board members publicly stating their individual perspectives related to this evening's vote.
Was that Ms. Gibson?
That was Ms. Gibson, I guess clarifying her motion.
Thank you.
Ms. Rizzi, are you, may I ask Ms. Rizzi if she agrees with that amendment of that, well, that additional language?
Ms. Rizzi, do you agree with that additional language?
I do not.
She says she does not.
She says she does not.
I have to say this, it is my hope that once we have discussions, what we decide becomes the will of the board and that we at least present the fact that we respect that. And it is because of that that I do not support the second part of the, or the amendment.
Okay, Ms. Gibson, are you going to stay with your original motion?
My language that you prefer. I'm not, I'm not clear on what she just said.
She asked, Ms. Rizzi, was there some revised language that she would prefer?
The original motion was what I seconded.
And I think I heard Ms. Rizzi say the original motion is what she will accept?
She said the original motion is what she seconded, yes.
What she seconded, okay.
Okay, I'll revise it, so it, hold on, so I'll revise this motion. Okay, so I'll just say that all contact with the media or public facing comments that are intended to reflect the district, or that intended to reflect the position of the body and the school district, so I'll revise the motion to read, with all contact with the media or public facing comments that are intended to reflect the position of the body and school district related to this legal action voted on this evening, the board will review all press statements and media advisories in advance. The superintendent will only appear in the media when he can be joined by Board Chair Dr. Shonda Harris Mohammed, who has been elected to speak on behalf of the governing body of Richmond Public Schools.
Okay. Ms. Lilly, translate, please.
I cannot, I did not, I did not get all of that down, I'm sorry, I just don't, didn't have that.
Okay, allow me, school board colleagues, to clean this up so we can move forward. We have a motion that is on the floor that was made by Ms. Gibson, and it was seconded by Ms. Rizzi, the original motion. Because Ms. Gibson wanted to change the language of the motion, and it has not been seconded, then that would mean, according to Robert Rules of Order, that new motion that she revised failed. So I'm going to ask one more time, for transparency and clarity, do we have a second on the revised motion? Hearing none, that revised motion fails. Now, what does this mean about her original motion? Because she added language, the new motion was not seconded, the revised motion was not seconded, then that takes us back to the first motion, am I correct, Ms. Lilly?
Yes, the original motion that was on the floor and seconded is up for debate at this point in time, and so I don't know if anybody had discussion about it.
I did not, I don't believe so, but you are my eyes right now.
I think there were some hands up. Now, this is for the original motion. Ms. White, any other hands?
My.
The superintendent?
My question is, I heard that one motion has failed. I cannot understand over here what the motion is, so can someone repeat it clearly, please?
The motion that's on the floor?
Ms. Gibson has sent the language to me for the second revised. Ms. Gibson has sent the language to me for the second revision of the motion. If it would be helpful for me to repeat that at any moment, please let me know.
Dr. Harris Mohammed, are we on the second motion or on that?
The second motion failed and was not seconded.
All right, so the original motion, language?
Correct.
Okay. So it was Dr., Mr. Kamras had his hand up?
Mr. Kamras?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This motion conveys a deep lack of trust in my integrity, leadership, and commitment to this board. I have no intention whatsoever of speaking at all about this matter. I would hope that this body would recognize that I take that commitment extremely seriously. This is a motion that if I were to apply it similarly to principals or to teachers, the board would find understandably quite outrageous. And so I respectfully request that the board not approve this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, I'm going to close this out, taking a point of personal privilege, if I may, board members. The superintendent cannot direct my schedule. He cannot tell me when to be present. And I understand the motion, I really do. So let's just move forward and take a roll call vote. Because it's been over an hour, and I, and you, you know, I'm-
Ms. White has her hand up. Ms. White has her hand up.
Ms. White?
Hold on.
Uh, yes. Again, I want it to be read again for clarity, because I didn't understand. I can't hear from over here on the right side.
And Ms. Rizzi and Ms. Page have their hands up.
Ms. Rizzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to ask Mr. Kamras, does this mean then that you won't be making any statements regarding this action today?
I'm sorry?
Ms. Rizzi asks, Mr. Kamras, does this mean you will not be making any statements about this matter? I think I got that. Is that, yes, okay.
What was the superintendent's response?
He's about to respond.
Okay.
I will not.
He said, I will not.
Because it's a legal matter.
Correct.
So none of us should be speaking. Okay, Ms. Page?
Ms. Page.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rizzi, but I'm glad the superintendent said he will not. Thank you.
Ms. Page?
Thank you. Just to restate this, yes, this is a legal matter, so I'm not sure why we're having this conversation. But also, this conversation, we are sending a strong message about the lack of trust between our partnership, collaboration with the superintendent and this school board. We have hired the superintendent to run the day-to-day operations when we continuously demonstrate the lack of trust. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page.
Ms. Jones and Ms. Rizzi.
Thank you, Ms. Page. I am going to close the discussion.
We have a question on the floor from Ms. White that had not been addressed.
She just wants you to read the motion, that's all.
Right. And-
Oh, Ms. White has something else.
I need clarification from Ms. Gibson.
I just closed the discussion. Does she have her hand up?
She did.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. White.
Um, I have asked for the motion to be read several times now, and I still haven't had it read, but I kind of read through the lines. And we just, a few minutes ago, had a gag order from Mr. Young, and I feel that if Mr. Young gags orders saying that no one can speak, we already know that this is a legal matter, then, so it should be the same thing for the superintendent, it should be no difference. So I'm not really sure why we're discussing this. But I didn't hear the motion, but I kind of read into it, so I believe if no one should be talking about it, if that's the case.
Madam Attorney, translate.
She, Ms. White basically said that she was not sure why we were talking about this, because if the gag order, as Mr. Young described it as, applies to the school board members, then it should apply to the superintendent, so she would not sure, so no one should be speaking about this.
Correct it does. Correct, correct it does. So the discussion is closed.
Madam-
Ladies and gentlemen, we are ready to speak, take a roll call vote. The discussion is closed. We are ready to take a roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
I would like to speak, I'm not sure, I'm not following the cadence of the discussion right now, and I would like to speak.
Madam Attorney, translate.
Ms. Gibson is still asking to speak.
Is it on this matter of the motion that I close the discussion so we can move on and take a roll call vote on her motion?
I'm not, I'm not, because I'm not following the cadence of the discussion, so I'm not positive where we are and what we're voting on. My, I do want to note, I'm concerned that, you know, with, or the discussion that we've not, that we're not going to be able to speak publicly. And I'd like to request that our attorney provide whatever the legal advice on this matter in public regarding board members from being able to speak. From my perspective on this, you know, there's, for a board member to share individual perspective, I do not see how it puts any sort of legal action at risk to share an individual perspective on this. And so I do want to provide voice to that concern.
Madam Attorney, translate, please.
I think the statement was made that, I really, with all due deference, I can't, I cannot-
She's also on the phone, and I'm, so I'm, right.
I can't, I don't want to misspeak and mistake what she said, so I am not going to attempt to.
Okay. And I cannot catch it all.
Basically, yeah, I don't want to misspeak.
Okay. Thank you.
But the part she did say something about, for me to state, I guess, what I've stated to you all, this is a legal matter, and it should not be discussed, and that's my comment on that. Thank you.
Okay, and correct. And again, let me say this, and we're moving on. It is a legal matter. If board members choose to talk about a legal matter that jeopardizes the board as a whole, I am asking you, and Chair, to remember that. But let me be clear, I'm not policing adults. The attorney has made her stressful point, I have made it, and I am asking you all, as my school board colleagues, to adhere to that request. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
I need clarification on what the actual wording of the motion is that we are voting on right now, because Ms. Gibson spoke on the third time to change the language when Ms. Rizzi rescinded her second on the second revision of the motion initially. So I'm asking for clarification as to what is the specific language.
Yes, ma'am. It is on the original motion. Let me go through this very quickly with parliamentary procedure and Robert Rules of Order. When a motion is made, that motion is seconded, and then when a person revises the motion, it creates a new motion, that new motion failed, it did not receive a second, we're back at the first motion, that's what we're voting on, the original motion. So, this is what I'm going to ask very quickly, if it's okay with board members, because this is, this is very difficult for all of us. You just can't even imagine how difficult this is for me right now. I need for Ms. Gibson to text her motion to Madam Attorney or the clerk, so she can see it visibly, and we can move on with the roll call vote, and everyone can have a great evening.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Gibson has sent me the language from her last iteration of the motion, and I need clarification that the information she sent to me does diverge from the original motion, because my recollection is that she did amend the motion from the second version that Ms. Rizzi rescinded her second on. And I just need clarification from Ms. Gibson that the language she sent to me is or is not identical to the initial motion.
I guess the question really is if Stephanie, still, I'm sorry, Ms. Rizzi, still supports the original motion that was on the table, I'm happy to provide the original language. That said, if she does not support the original motion, then I can rescind the motion altogether, and we can move on.
Madam Attorney, translate, please.
So basically, I did hear that she wants to make sure of whether or not, or confirm whether or not Ms. Rizzi is still in agreement with the original motion, and if not, she will, I believe she said, rescind or withdraw the motion, and we can move on.
Ms. Rizzi, do you still agree with the original language of the original motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If the superintendent is no, is not going to be making any statements, I don't necessarily see that this motion is necessary. And let the record stand that this had nothing to do with my distrust of the superintendent, it had more to do with the fact that I wanted representation from the governing body if any statement should be made. At this time, I do not see, because the superintendent has stated that he is not making any statements, a need for this motion. So I will withdraw.
She is withdrawing her second.
And if he does, then we deal with that in a closed session. That's how this process works, board colleagues. So he has made the statement that he is not, and again, if he does, then we, as the board together, as one governing body, have a conversation. So Ms. Gibson, at this point, because Ms. Rizzi has withdrawn her second, according to parliamentary procedures, your motion would then fail. Would you like to rescind it or just let it die? It's up to you, darling.
Yes, I can withdraw my motion.
She is withdrawing her motion.
Thank you. So we don't need a roll call vote. We have already voted on where we stand on the legal matter. Are there, is there any more business on the agenda, Madam Clerk, that we need to adhere to today?
No, ma'am. Meeting just needs to be adjourned.
Thank you. At this time, board colleagues and everyone that's viewing at 4:43, I adjourn this meeting. Have a great evening. You all be well and be safe. Bye-bye.